Good evening. I'd like to call the Alton Board of Selectmen's Budget Meeting to order November 9th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. If you please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Men in silence.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Till further notice to comply with the RSA's, the state emergency and the governance orders, restriction on public gathering, the town is limiting attendance at public meetings to conform with current social distancing guidelines. The town will also continue to offer remote access to those that cannot attend to or wish to remain at home. To remotely attend the meeting, audio and video, visit our website, www.alton.nh.gov. On the day of the meeting for the instructions, or telephone the Selectmen's Office, (603) 875-2113, or (603) 875-0229. There continues to be no public input at this time. Gentlemen, if we can approve the agenda, I think Mr. McDonald has an amendment.
I'd like to amend the agenda and add water first before we go into the health insurance discussion.
Motion made by Mr. McDonald to amend the agenda to water department and make it the number one versus what we go in the other workshop business. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second would follow. Sheldon, any discussion? I'll poll the board. Mr. Holden.
Yes.
Mr. Sheldon.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Whitworth, yes. Courtney, if you could join us up here.
Thank you. So, this is our second week on Mooney Street in the past two weeks. Our runtime is down to four hours a day from Jones Field to crunch time. Moon Street this summer, or maybe spring, I put in two six-inch taps to run a new main down Mooney Street because it's an aged two-inch galvanized line. That line had at least ten patches in it. Should have been replaced before. I had all intentions, that's why I left the patches and gravel, because I didn't want to put the asphalt back in there and re-dig the asphalt, hook up to that six-inch and run a new main. It's a 540 feet. We're getting down to crunch time, but I don't see any improvement come the winter once the frost gets into the ground. So, I would like to run a new six-inch main as soon as possible, maybe even starting next week. We have it in our budget. The only problem is it's probably the asphalt and crunch time that we're under to pave that six-inch main down the road and the main to stop customers' properties. Should have been done, but we just, we didn't have the time with the two-man crew to get it done with all our other stuff. And to be honest, it could be tight right now if we have any other calls, but I think trying to get as far as we can this year would benefit us more than throwing more Band-Aid wraps into that. For one, I mean, the customers don't deserve that. They get dirty water, they get low pressure from that having, I mean, there's a ton of water coming out of those holes. And it's just, it's meant its lifetime and then so. So, that's why I came tonight. We had a week. Came in at 4:30 this morning last Friday. We got a call for another week on the beginning of Mooney Street. If it wasn't a Saturday, I would have hooked onto that stub that I put in there and at least put a stick in there, but, you know, a Saturday, I think it was like 3 o'clock in the afternoon, he came in running around for parts to get that done. We just put a patch on it, hoping to come back and fix it, and another one blew up this morning. On top of that, I had to run to bring RSC samples to Concord, so I reached out to whoever I knew, talked to them, listed something else coming up, while the boys backfilled and the Highway Department assisted us with getting the hole filled up. We had a job at Concord Center that was going on Wednesday and Thursday last week, and was supposed to be finished today on Monday, but we couldn't get to it because of Mooney Street. So, like I told you before, the pressure leave in the pump station is at 165 pounds. My hot water heater is having problems. I had to put a pressure reducer in my own house this weekend. I have 97 pounds coming from my street. If you know where my house is, I'm right in the middle, if not the top of the hill. So, the pressure is there and it's going to keep finding those weak spots. So, it's not anything I want to throw on your plate coming into the holiday season or the cold temperatures, but I think it needs to be done pronto. So, I'll leave it up to you guys. I mean, the stubs are there. We've got to run 540 feet of six-inch main. I think I priced it, it's gonna probably be about 65 to 7500 in pipe. The boys can do all the work, so.
How long do you expect?
To run it?
Yeah.
If we have no other calls where the guys have to go back and forth. I mean, if one guy leaves to do something, it's just the two of us carry on. So, I would hope to get the walk-behind saw to cut the asphalt. We don't have to worry about the old main. We can just fuse that whole pipe, cut it, put the hole in, throw it in the ground, make the two connections, and then we can come back with it. Our many have to rate our small ones and do the main stops. I think there was eight. So, you're gonna have that patched down the middle of the road and whatever main stops we have for the services. So, I mean, it's, it's a, the plan was to get to it this, this summer, but it just was, there wasn't enough time in the day with two people and all the other stuff going on.
Looks like you said you have the money in your budget, right?
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's a big enough patch that we, we wouldn't do it by hand, I can tell you that. I mean, it's 540 feet straight and then, you know, at least three-four feet wide.
Yeah, you have me informed. Sounds like it's gotta get done.
Sounds like you gotta get right on it.
We're, we're on top of the galvanized. There's not much left, but I'm telling you, every, every time we bury a hole, another one pops up. I mean, there's rocks right on top of it.
Now you're getting into rocks, pushing the rocks.
It's just, it's a rescue disaster. And I mean, can we patch it and keep going through the winter? Absolutely, but I mean, I don't want to put my guys through that if we don't have to, you know, January, February temperatures, digging through the frost.
Well, I think too is that we're at that point where a lot of these mains are just wore out.
Yeah. Well, the galvanized especially. Yeah.
With the wind, it's that.
It'll be upsized substantially. The other end of Mooney Street, the one, the 140 side, that is actually an eight-inch main that feeds over to Hutchins. So, they should be very happy with the pressure they get. I will inform all of them that their pressure will drastically be increased.
You gotta reduce it.
Yeah.
What size is this main? Six?
The one on Mooney Street, the two-inch galvanized main, so I would dare say you have three-quarter inches on swabs. It is, I was gonna, if I had more time, I would have prepared a slideshow for you guys to see the inside of that main, the funny pictures and it's.
You'd be much luck with that.
No. It's choked right down.
It was junk when they put it in.
So, it's amazing because it was just throwing good money after bad money just going in.
Well, the Band-Aids are cheap, you know.
The Band-Aids aren't cheap. You keep digging the same hole.
Fortunately, today it came in at 4:15 in the morning, so we could get a good day, but usually we don't wait until 4:15 at night to keep talking overtime and then.
Sure.
Get too high.
Especially coming into winter.
It's not gonna get better.
That's it. It's not gonna get any better.
My other question would, my other question would be, we, Mr. Robinson's here, if the board doesn't mind, I have a question for him. He's kind enough to come in on his vacation for the next one of the, number B. Mr. Robinson, if you don't mind answering, is there something you could help the Water Department with? I mean, I know you're finishing up your construction crews and stuff now. Is there something you could maybe give her a hand digging to help them get along?
Yeah, the only thing we have is we have Mike Robinson coming to do a valuation on the excavator. We've got a couple of problems open, the ones we complained about turning again. So, he comes with an evaluation on that, but other than that, this is the only week, this is a rough week. You've got a lot of people that are off this week. A lot of guys, Tom, so they're not.
I'm not a.
But next week, yeah, we're gonna tear into it. Let's get into it. I don't see a reason why we can't put some trucks there and just go for it.
So, we'll, yeah, let you and Courtney get together on that and handle that. The town administrator, won't be any problem with that, right?
That's right.
Okay. All right. I appreciate it.
We can take care of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very much.
I hear you. And the board's all set with this?
Yes, definitely.
Somebody make a motion to approve the Water Department to replace the water line down Mooney Street.
Exactly.
Motion's made by Reuben Whitworth to have the water pump replace the main down Mooney Street. Second by Virgil McDonald. Any other discussion? I'll poll the board. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. Sheldon.
Yes.
Yes. Both are affirmative. You're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Customers will appreciate it a lot.
Yeah. All right, gentlemen, Laura cannot be here tonight at the meeting. She'll be here next week, so I'm gonna ask you to table the health insurance discussion until next week. But she's the one that's formulated this plan. I know she's worked with the town administrator on it. She's kind of the author of it, and I'd rather have her here to answer the questions. Just to give the town administrator also another week to look at other matters. Okay? All right, gentlemen, so that one will be tabled. We're gonna move on to Highway Department, Public Works Department discussion. Mr. Robinson's here tonight. Entertaining you, gentlemen. Uh, Mr. Robinson, come out and sit with us while we discuss this.
Yeah.
And as you remember, you did receive in your packet last, the other week there, God summary of a public work, director of public works that I had saw in the paper when they were looking for one, forwarded over to Liz, and then she printed it out. So, you gentlemen, I have to give you an idea of some duties and descriptions. I'm sure Mr. Robinson's looked at it at this point. The gentleman that also was the town administrator here at one time is the town administrator in Guilford now. I'm sure he had part in redoing this job description too. So, gentlemen, I'll open the conversation up with you four to see where you.
I can honestly say, Mr. Chairman, that I don't know. I've heard what golf has to say, and I've heard what Paul has to say. I want to hear what you and Virgil have to say. I want to hear what Ken has to say, and I want to hear what Liz has to say.
To me, I think it needs to go on a warrant article and go in front of the people. Nice for a road agent down there until this passes.
Are you thinking should be a warrant article before we even consider?
We shouldn't be able to add people and sneak them into a budget, just like when we did the ambulance. We put it out to the people, and the people decided. It's their money. And I think that this is a big enough salary and big enough benefits and stuff to go with it, that it should go in front of the people, on a warrant article, and let them decide if that's the direction they would like to put it in.
Aside from that, no. I understand where you're coming from there. If the decision could be made today, would you be in, having a public work?
No.
You wouldn't. Okay. Just, that's what I wanted.
We're making it, we're making the town administrative heavy, because you're gonna have all your supervisors still, and you're adding another position on top of that for another 140,000 or 100,000, whatever it is, and you're starting to get administrative heavy. That's my view.
Mr. Chairman?
Well, the way I look at it is that the highway agent now in that position, that will be becoming what is the Public Works Director. That the salary that you saw that was presented in front of you is roughly the same salary that this position is paying now. There's no reason why that agent can't become this position, then you have a foreman down at the Highway Department, which would be promoted within the house, I would assume, or I would think that's the way we would go. And then you'd be looking at a truck driver, or a loader operator, or a new grinder operator. That would be the only thing. We're looking at putting in a new truck driver now. So, the salary range on this is already what we're paying. To say it's the Highway Department calling it the Public Works Department now is basically gonna be one of the same, just with a few more responsibilities starting.
Lot more.
Well, a lot more responsibilities, but moving in some departments, so you, instead of just having a highway crew, now you have the building and grounds maintenance individuals, the Water Department come underneath there. So, there are more responsibilities, but the salary price range is still the same. To me, do I think we need to go before the people? No. We have a disshery responsibility. Let me finish. Let you talk. We have pretty sure responsibility to get the best dollar to this town. I feel this is the best way to go. And I'm not saying do it in one swoop. The first year, we move one department over. Whoever's hired for this, the candidate for this position would know, knowing coming into it, within three years, the other departments would be coming in. So, the first year, you move one department in buildings and grounds. Probably the easiest one and for the most maintenance. Bring that in, that gives more crew. Secondly, then the next year, solid waste down the roads, cemetery, and you'd have the Water Department. I don't think you're making it administrative heavy. I've looked at other towns, Wolfboro, Guilford, similar towns of our size, and it works very well for us. I just feel that we're at that time and place in the history of Alton that we need to look further that way and have a better surrounding of what's going on.
I think time is gonna be a factor. It's late, and I think we're gonna have, I mean, we have, Mr. Robinson's gonna be leaving in April. I don't know if we have enough time to, to actually fill this position satisfactorily with someone to take on these kind of responsibilities that I'm seeing that they have for the application of Guilford. I think it is administrative he- heavy. There's a lot, there's a lot there for one person to achieve and all at one time. Now, if you're saying you're doing phases of, of over a few years, that's a different story, but to take it all on at once and within the next five months is a big, big step, and I don't know if we have the time. But when we went, we put a full-time fire chief in. It went in front of the people. When we went and put ambulance people full-time down there, it went in front of the people.
Oh, we never put full-time ambulance down there.
We put 24-hour coverage down.
Tried to do 24-hour coverage, and it was amended on the floor by somebody on the floor, put in the $90,000 as a stipend if I remember right. Well, whatever it is, we've been talking about this for three years. It's gone nowhere. So, my decision, my discussion would be to the board, is, is this something you want to do or no? If it's not, then just make a motion, say, "Question the idea. We just hire a highway agent."
I'd like to ask, if I missed my name, Ken, how do you, do we have time to, or is this just like wait till next year?
Well, for the foreman side of it, I agree with Reuben. That's what you're gonna have to do with the Highway Department. You're gonna have to bring up a form. The good thing about this is, and I say good thing, is that for the next two years, you're not gonna do road reconstruction. You're gonna do church and school street. It's gonna be completely bid out.
Right.
Time scheduled. You've got one mile of Robert's Cove Road that requires an enormous amount of cutting through ledge, or blasting, or hammering, or whatever it is. That's not the Highway Department. So, you have a good amount in the next two years that you need to take care of, that is gonna be very costly. Highway Department will go right back to maintenance for the next couple of years. You have a couple of years to put this program together, but understand what the program does for you when you start getting back into road reconstruction. This year alone, we saved approximately $3.6 million. You want to justify the cost? I don't know about you, but that's pretty good justification to make. The thing is that you also look at, this is an administrative position. This guy's not gonna be sitting behind a plow truck. This guy is gonna be sitting there looking at all the rules, regulations, grants. He should be able to write enough in grants to pay his own salary, not counting what he can save in road reconstruction. That's just one of them. We have some departments that are lacking. He can coordinate those depending on the ability that you give to that individual. He can coordinate it. Now, I did it this year. I didn't go and ask permission to do it. I just did. We got things done. We grabbed people from Highway. We grabbed this right now. You just authorized Highway Department to go to the Water Department. That's what a Public Works Director oversees. Also, what's coming up next? You have a major plan, master plan for the town. This guy should be totally emboldened in this. You have no idea what your infrastructure is. GIS that Josh is bringing in is gonna help you bring that infrastructure into play. You have millions and millions and millions of dollars in roads and bridges and box culverts and stuff that's out there and signs and culverts that you have really no idea. I couldn't tell you today. Because we don't have that system in play. This is the guy that brings it all together. Also, they write SOPs. They put standard operating procedures, so everybody has a guideline. This is the way this is done. Not outside the line, not inside the line. We've gotta follow OSHA guidelines, even though we're not under OSHA. We're actually under Department of Labor, but we have to follow those things. That's the guy that brings all the safety protocols into play. He's also part of your public safety committee, if that's what you want. But this guy has the knowledge and the background to start bringing all this together. Do you do it one year? Maybe not. Do you get rid of any, the department has those? Are you key players right now? That's what's been keeping the town running. Courtney, Kelly, solid waste, everything. This guy is just gonna step in and say, "How can I help you? What grants can we grab? What can we write?" This guy's gotta have a background in this stuff, but that's just it. So, he's gotta start writing grants and stuff right away. I, I tell you the truth, the grants that I received, and they were some big grants, but I got them through the ARM grant, right through DES, and I had to help Cindy Valcias. He has a knowledge of that. I mean, Coffinburg Road was $112,000. You know, we received a couple of other grants, your bridge grant. You gotta put all that stuff into play. Somebody's gotta have a background in bridges. I was very fortunate, over the years, as much time that I've spent here, that I had some great engineers to be able to sit down and talk to. I mean, I can remember sitting on the bridge on Hollywood Beach, the first one I ever built, and sitting there with a bridge engineer, and all they do is ask questions, and she answered them all. You know, and, but this guy already knows some of this stuff, so he knows how to set that up. Knows how to do the reporting to the state of New Hampshire. You know, every time we rebuild a road, that goes in towards our block grant money? The more improvements we make, the more block grant money we receive. It's reported to the state. We've improved this, that raises our block grant money. This is why when I started, I think it was like $80,000. Now, we're $180,000, $190,000, but that's that base reporting that we do.
Eight, wasn't it?
Excuse me?
$168.
Yeah, I don't, depending on which way they fluctuate. But that's just some of the things. FEMA, gotta have a background working with FEMA. We don't drag every cent we can out of them.
So, this is going back to my point. This isn't gonna be a position that's gonna be filled overnight. It has to be somewhere that's well-qualified in all aspects of reconstruction.
And what I'm saying is that, other than putting a foreman at the Highway Department, you still have some time to work on this.
It's gonna take a while to, to get applicants that will even come in for this.
And, and that's gonna be a big thing. When you've got the dollar figure out there, then you've gotta figure out whether or not the applicants come in, and then you've gotta find out. And what I would do is, I'd call Public Works Directors in other towns, and they'd see if they would sit in on your interview. And I know through the Public Works Net that most likely they'd come over, sit down with you to do an interview, to be able to bring somebody in. You know, because they have the background and knowledge. They can ask the key questions.
Sure.
And we've done it before. I've sat in on a couple hiring procedures in different towns. But those are the examples. Over the next two years, you need a foreman. Be somebody that can drive these guys in a direction just to accomplish work. Get it done. They're gonna have a list a mile long when I leave, and they know it. But after I leave, then that's gotta have that driving force, that pushing force. That's what a Public Works Director is there for, is, I think, is to be able to answer questions. Courtney's got a problem. She just brought it before the board of selectmen. The Public Works Director was here. All she had to do was go to the Public Works Director, "Can you help me out? We've got a truck and an excavator on it. Three guys will help you out. What can we do?" You give him the ability to be able to draw from those positions to be able to accomplish a job, and that's what's good about it. Not that we're trying to circumvent Liz out of her job or anything, but this guy's the problem solver. When things come to him or her, it's solved. It doesn't have to go any further. And if they feel that it's that bad, or it's that devastating, then they sit right here before you and discuss it with you. They look, we're outside the guidelines, but they are gonna be watching the budgets, the way they spend. Help them prepare the budgets, help them to bring them to you, show you where your faults are at, show you where your pusses are at. I mean, there's a lot to it. I have the one here for somebody, John O'Sonner, and I have another one here for Public Works in Merritt.
Where?
Merritt.
Meredith?
Yes.
Yeah, you own it from.
That's, and I've known Mike for a long time. That's Mike Fowler. He has an operations director underneath them, and underneath them are departments. Talk about being heavy on top, but again, Mike, Mike runs a tight crew, that he is on type of everything. He's the type of guy that would jump in a plow truck and be out there plowing just to check on, see how everything's coming. Not that he's out there on every storm, but he's definitely the type of guy that steps out there and finds out what's going on. And if there's a problem, and it says one of, one of these descriptions, you know, they're gonna call 24/7, you know.
And at least 10 years of supervisory experience, at least.
Well, yeah, you're gonna have supervisory experience, you know, only be able, how do you handle somebody? I can handle Virgil a lot different than I can handle Reuben, which is a lot different than I can handle Bob. That's supervisory experience. That's what that's all about. How do I handle different people? Everybody's different. Everybody looks at me and goes, "How do you do that? What do you mean?" Geez, somebody's in the middle of a divorce. He came in with a bad attitude today. I say, "I got a bad attitude today. Just kinda keep it to yourself." How do you know? You can tell. You know, just kinda, don't ruin the crew. You got somebody to talk to? Come talk to me, you know, I'll help you out. But those are the things. That's what a supervisor does. He draws, draws from the low end of things and brings it back in.
Okay. I don't think I'm putting you on the spot because you're retiring anyway. The idea of this new position, do you think it's an idea, its time has come?
Oh, yes. This is definitely a plus. You need somebody with experience. I was very fortunate. I had some great teachers. I had some great engineers that came to the town of Alton. I got a great amount of phone numbers. I got a public resource group. I talk to Public Works Directors all around the Lake Region. I got a problem. I used to call Sheldon. Now, we're looking for a new Public Works Director at Guilford. I used to call Sheldon. Sheldon threw it on Public Works next to Mike, over to Marty over in Wolfboro. We'd all get together. We'd all go have lunch someplace and sit down and talk about the problem, and we'd find, figure out and answer it. So, it's, it's not one person, but it's, it's the group being able to know that you can go out collectively and bring all that.
Who's to say the next road agent ain't gonna do the same thing without having a public works director?
I think it will take them a long time to get there.
See, Mr. Chairman?
You don't have that time.
Kenny has been here so long, and he's learned so much, I think. I don't think you knew hardly anything when you came to work here that you know now.
You know what we did the first year, excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt you. You know what we did the first year? We grabbed chainsaws and cut brushings, so.
He was a mariner. He said he could get it done, could get it done.
So, we can't expect to hire somebody and put them through the same program.
Right. No.
So.
But you can hire a knowledgeable person.
Well.
And have them step in.
Oh, see, you're losing the perspective of the, of the Public Works Director. He directs the operation up here, like Kenny's doing now.
Yeah, and why can't you put another road agent in?
Kenny's, Kenny isn't doing it 100% now. He's doing an awful lot of it, but you should have, we have people in the highway. There could be a foreman now, I believe. So, you're gonna have to form that highway foreman position. That's not a $100,000 position.
So, maybe we should go back to the voted-in position.
What's that?
Go back to a voted-in highway agent.
You know the downside to that?
Oh, oh, well, that's, he could do a lot of things, but now you're really going backwards. But I've worked under Public Works Directors as a selectman, as an employee, and it works, believe me.
It do work.
And the town of Alton isn't getting any smaller.
We haven't grown that much either in.
Before, the town of Alton's gonna start growing. I'm a firm believer.
I, I, I like the idea. We've had this conversation before, and I, and I like the idea. I'm just talking about actual time between now and the time that you leave and having somebody qualified to be able to come in, take that position, and be able to get it up and running and be sufficient.
There, there's a lot to learn. I mean, you know, over the first year is nothing but a learning stage.
Well, absolutely.
We mentioned step by step, yeah, because you have to figure out logistics.
Figure out the time.
They take over buildings and grounds. We're gonna move them. Let's say you're gonna jam it on the Highway Department, the flood zone, because that ain't gonna happen.
They go, what? They're taking it out of the mechanics garage there, out of that.
So, I mean, you know, it's, it's gonna be a step by step. I don't plan on going anywhere unless I go six feet under, but, you know, and for nominal fee, I'm gonna be back.
$100 an hour, you told me. A hundred dollars an hour, you told me.
But, yeah, it's not, it's not the full job, job I'm looking for, but I don't mind to come back to consult in some ways, if, if that's the case.
Maybe we get back into a plow truck.
But actually, the hiring process, like, you know, that's, that's really not that difficult. God forbid, something could happen to Kenny tomorrow. What's gonna happen? We gonna wait five months?
No, the next person in, in line is gonna take over this part.
Wait, wait, one at, whoa, whoa, one at a time. Paul had, Russ, Bob was talking, then it was Paul, then it was you, one at a time.
Well, town manager's sitting over there. Something could happen, so you can fill these positions. You, you work with a different organizations, you have the municipal association can give you guidance. And, these gentlemen, there's town managers, town administrators, public works directors, it's a fraternity. These, these gentlemen have all gone to school, Kenny even said it, they get together, and they discuss different things, and a lot of them can better themselves by going to another community, and this is what they do. And I think this is a, a wonderful opportunity for an energetic public works director.
It is a wonderful opportunity, let the people decide. We also know that when Ken was out, um, uh, during, when having surgery, that we had some personnel that did very well. Uh, taking over and working with him and did well, uh, under his supervision, I mean, even if he wasn't here, you were on the phone with them, um...
You can't say that.
Well, I'm saying if there was a problem.
It may have been fictitiously happening.
Slowly taking away the people's voices, just like we stood at delivery session when we leased vehicles, and said, "If we're gonna lease them..."
I definitely hear you there.
"If we're gonna lease them, we'll come back in front of you," and we stood right at the delivery session and said it. Not once have we gone back in front of them to lease a vehicle, because now it's in the budget, now we just lease them. When we swore that we would come back in front of them. And here we are, now we're gonna replace the road agent, and put in a public works director, and you're taking that vote away from the people, their will. It's their money, it's their will. Whether they vote yes or no, it's their will.
So at this point, as far as time goes, I believe you have enough time. Prove the job description, get it out, middle of December you close it, put it out there for a month. As that month goes, as we have in the past with the finance officer and everything else, review the applicants as they come in. By January first, you already have established what, four or five candidates, if you get that many candidates. You go through them, you set up appointments. February first, you made your decision. That gives that individual thirty days, notify their employer, they're done, first of March, they turn on, they're there with Mr. Roberts for thirty days before he retires. I feel there's enough time. We did not go before the people, Virgil, to hire a new full-time employee now at the fire department. We're also... Oh, wait, no, let, let me finish. I did not interrupt you, do not interrupt me. The highway department, we just approved this year for another truck driver, if I'm not mistaken. We're not going before the people ask their permission for that. This is the department head that can do a lot of certain things, the salary range is still within the price, we're creating a foreman at the highway department, which we probably should have had long before now, but we haven't because it's worked so well for Mr. Roberts now. When Mr. Roberts was hired, if I remember right, and I was sitting on the board, and Rick Drew was here, you were hired as the foreman. And once you moved into the position of road agent, the foreman kinda went by the wayside.
Elect it first.
Not that Douglas was hired for a while, wasn't he? So, we had it, then it kinda went by the wayside because Mr. Roberts kept it under control. So, we're really not creating any new position that we didn't have before. We're just adding more title, more responsibility. I'm calling the public works department. You're calling, Liz, you got this down, Director of Public Works, Director of Public Works, a highway, well, highway agent of public works. If you wanna call it that way, then you're not creating a new title underneath the name. But this individual, no matter he or she, is able to go out and get more things done. Tonight, when Courtney came before us, and he asked Mr. Roberts, "Can you help her up?" "Not a problem, we'll help you do what we gotta do, we can do it next week," boom. That's a perfect example, they could have just, he's sitting there listening to the meeting, and the individual's listening to the meeting, saying, "We gotta cover, I'll make sure there's enough group here, 'cause we can take from here or here." I'm not saying take anything away from the people. Easiest way the people can say no, they go to default budget. And then that kills them.
And I've heard from a lot of people already, that that's what they're planning to do, because we hid things in the budget.
We did not hide a thing in, we did not hide a thing in the budget. And I'm not hiding any, and I'm not...
In the budget, instead of asking.
Yeah, I tell you what, you leave the meeting, will you keep that up? I've asked you not to, because I have not interrupted you once.
Well, I was talking.
You wanna keep that?
I was talking, and then you start talking, and I was talking. When you start talking, I started talking and said about the budget. I didn't interrupt you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think, I always ask for permission to speak. I think that's the way it should be done, you're the chairman, you're running the meeting.
You need to ask permission, I just ask for a little respect.
Well, I agree with it, and I don't believe in interrupting, I just did though.
So gentlemen, what's your pleasure on this tonight?
I'd still like to hear from the town administrator, and seeing as how she's here tonight, uh, not to put her on the spot, or put, uh, the town administrator on the spot. I, I'd be curious to hear what Kelly might have to say about having this position that would be in a position to pull somebody from highway to help her, somebody, pull somebody from her department, maybe help water. But I'd just like to know what Kelly would think about it, and what Liz would think about it.
Liz?
I think it's time for a public works department with a, a director, a public works director, with the different, under the umbrella of a public works, different departments, divisions, crew chiefs, foremen, even department heads. I like, the, the documents that were handed out to you from Guilford. Um, I, you know, if this continues to move forward, I would take the, the Guilford job description and put it into the format that we're using for consistency. The amount of work is increasing, and slowly the number of employees are increasing, and all of the responsibilities are increasing. I, I think it's time, um... And the public works director would be more of an administrative position, and the day-to-day work would be handled by the various department heads that would be under that umbrella, or crew chiefs, or foremen, uh, what have you. And that part of it, putting, placing departments underneath that umbrella, that could be done piecemeal, if you didn't wanna rush through it. You could do, like someone mentioned earlier, one or two a year or something. There are quite a few that could go under that umbrella, but I think the, the more critical ones would need to be done first. Another thing too to consider is, if you, if you start to create the umbrella, and then you hire somebody and put that person in place, then pull that person into the loop for future discussions on moving forward each year, and, and tweaking things, or pulling more, more departments under the umbrella. I, I do believe that the Parks and Rec director has too many departments under her control. I think she's doing a fabulous job, but I think it's too much, she doesn't have enough staff. And when you have different departments under the umbrella of a public works, everyone helps everyone, it's not just the highway crew going to help this and that, you can change different people from different departments, and...
May I say something to that effect?
Yeah.
What you just said right there, I mean, yes, it's an umbrella. It's another, it's another person in charge of a group. Sometimes what we have is less feet on the, on the ground, less personnel working on the ground. Sometimes we don't need more direction, we need more feet on the ground.
Right.
Workers, and being able to work on it, and that's something I, I try to toy with in my mind, back and forth. I mean, if we're just adding more to the administrative part of it, that's not helping the workload, other than pulling people from other departments to do work. Now, that part I like. I like if this, if this, uh, department is weak for any reason, vacations or, or illness, another department can come in and help, I, I like that idea, uh, back and forth.
So, what, let me explain it a little bit more, um...
I was gonna add something else to that, I mean, as you know, there's fifteen different things in this, examples of duties performed. And some of these things, you know, cemetery custodian, health officer. We have a health officer, so, and he's also the building inspector, does that take his position away as, as health officer?
No, you, you don't have to follow this exactly, you create your own.
This is just a guideline, I get it, yeah. So we have to rewrite up a, a guideline as to what we would be looking for.
A job description.
Job description of what we're actually looking for.
But...
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
God, now I've lost my train. So, I only see one additional person being added, and that would be the public works department. All the other departments already have someone who's in charge, such as cemetery, they have a cemetery secretary who leads the crew every day. Highway department, they have actually two separate, uh, crews under the highway department, maintenance and road reconstruction. They each have a foreman-type person in charge of each crew. So I, I don't think it's necessarily becoming more top-heavy if you add one public works director.
Well, in some departments, then, what does that department head do? At this point, at this point, if you have a supervisory position above that administrative or that department head, some, some of the departments, I mean, that, that changes their position, doesn't it?
So I, I'm, I'm not following you. So a- as an example, with the highway department, you would have, there would be the public works department, and then within the highway department, the two different crews, I mean, everything would be still the same. I, I'm, wasn't saying create another position called highway manager underneath the public works department, but you certainly could, if you wanted to.
Get what you're saying. I don't think you understand what I'm saying. Uh, they, it, it's, it's almost like having two department heads running the same department. You have two department heads in a way, that one's running all the other departments, but you still, you still have an administrative position working with an administrative position to get the job done. And not, I'm not saying all departments, some departments, I'm saying some have more of a workload than others.
I, I can only tell you from my experience in the past, um, one particular town, that is three times the size of this town, had a public works director who was also slash highway manager, same thing. Although the person did not necessarily work on a job site unless it was absolutely necessary. But there were crew chiefs involved for the different groups of people going out to do different sorts of work. Same with cemetery. The cemetery was a, like a division, if you will, underneath the umbrella. Cemetery division, the Parks and, Parks and Recreation division, the, you know, different, different divisions. And there was some sort of a person who would be in charge onsite, working right along with the people on the ground. So it's not like, I, it, it's not like the crew chiefs would be standing on the side directing everybody. They would be part of the, the workforce, you know, in the hole in the ground, or mowing the cemeteries, or, or what have you.
That's fine, as long as it stays that way.
Well, what, so if, if, okay, so why are you saying that? I mean, with, this is all just hypothetical, why would you think it would, something that you set into place would change? I don't understand that. Why, why are you gonna say that?
I'm, I'm just saying, as long as it, um, it's, it's some of the departments, I'm just saying, I just don't wanna see too much of administrative, and not enough actually, um, personnel being able to do the work. And, and not having, and not having two people basically doing the same position. That's all I'm afraid of. I'm afraid of down the road, that person and, and the department heads are basically doing the same thing. And not, and not dispersing the work to the, trying to explain it, um... Not to have two people doing the same position.
Doing it...
Doing the same job. It's all I'm saying.
Well, I think if it's set up correctly, that wouldn't happen.
Okay.
Can I just, uh, follow what you're saying? The public works director, the way I look at it, highway foreman would follow underneath the water superintendent, follow underneath the individual. Parks and Rec director would stay out of that department. That department would go back to fundamentally doing the parks and recreation programs of this town, to give that individual more time to do what they have to do. Building and grounds, one, hospital center. Public works director would go to the highway department and say, "This needs to be done this week to the foreman. I want this done, this is how it needs to be laid out, 'cause you got engineering degrees in there looking at plans and everything." So all the wait centers have an issue with pollution up there, just say, "Hmm, better go." Public works director gets involved, gets on the phone to DES, and says, "What's the problem? What, what's your problem with us now?" Water department, same thing. They handle all that, they go back to the department heads, and say, "This is what has to be done to correct the situation." That department head at that time, whether the superintendent, highway foreman, soilway director handles that, gets it done, underneath the jurisdiction of the director, that's the way I see it. So they're non-administrative. They're making sure the project getting done, that the individual hands down from the public works department. Work orders. Our correct director all of a sudden has a program coming up down the bay. Sends a work order over to the public works director, "I need this, this, and this by this date because I have this program being done." It's up to that individual to make sure the certain departments get that done for them. That's the way I look at it, as the chain of command goes down, so you don't, see, that's the way it should work.
That's the way it should work.
That's the way it should be done, saving time, saving energy, but also pulling individual powers together, so things get done more evenly consistently when they have to be done, such as what we're gonna do up in these town. Mr. McDonald?
Just to let you know, we've been sitting here with our hand up for a while. The, why can't these groups work together now? If they need help, they can pull, like they're doing it, they are, like they're doing it.
They are.
Yeah. And he started calling people from here and there, and all they could do is ask.
Mr. Roberts? Yeah, uh, just to address this, is that, and you keep mentioning grounds and maintenance, and I, you know, again, who's gonna supervise that group? If you're gonna switch it over, you're gonna have to do it in very slow phases. And not to talk about one individual, but I think it's been run for like the last seventeen years. Grounds and maintenance, but the same individual. If you're gonna start phasing that out, that'd be one thing, it'd be a phased-out project, you just can't dump it, because the knowledge of everything that goes on is held by one person.
I, I understand that.
So, again, you still want those department heads running the day-to-day operations, and you want somebody sitting up here to say, "The paint on the museum is starting to fall off, can we get it done?" Public works director? Yep, can we get it done? Can we get some guys on the ladder to scrape it? Can we get a couple extra people over there? The grounds and maintenance, what's their workload right now? It's up to him to get that project done. Working with the other department heads, or the foreman, in order to, in order to get that completely done. But again, phasing this is gonna be one thing. If you think you're gonna dump grounds and maintenance on top of a foreman at the highway department, and he's the loader operator, that'd never work, unless you make a foreman for grounds and maintenance, which now you're creating another thing. Or if you've already got somebody that runs the department day-to-day activities, I don't know if I'd get up and dump that.
You gotta start with a department somewhere. I've just been using grounds and maintenance.
You oversee.
Could've said cemetery first, could've said water department first. But in conjunction, sidewalks, stuff like that, should be the responsibility of the highway department, not buildings and grounds, is the way I look at it in the town of Walton. It's looking at statues, highways and sidewalks underneath that statue. If it seems like I'm picking on buildings and grounds, it's not meant to be. But I thought that was the first apartment phase over, that's why I said it'd be, I'm looking at three-year phase. So it works then slowly and comfortably, we get the knowledge from the department heads we have to get from that's been doing it for years. Seventeen years, you're right. Would I agree to it all again, that, that's the way it should be? Seventeen years, you're right. Would I agree to it all again? That that's the way it should've gone? Maybe not, because it put a lot on that department. More, and you all know as well as I do, it did. More so now than then, all of a sudden, the cemetery went on that department because of what happened to the trustees and everything. I just feel it's time that the town needs to move in this direction because of all the workload that's coming on. You even said it yourself, we got probably two to three roads coming on. We keep hearing about them. We haven't seen them because the paperwork's not. But everyone's come to meet you on those roads, asking what's going on. I said, we'll go back and see the owner of the roads. So those are coming. We're gonna have more roads. We're gonna have more roads for reconstruction. Next two years, we don't have nothing. This is where I thought this would be the time to phase it in. If that's not the pleasure of the board, then, you know, we can talk about it. Or if you wanna phase it into two years, well, there's no real road reconstruction going on through the highway department. But it it's a discussion, Virgil, you even, two years ago, me and you talked, you were all in favor. Now it sounds like you've changed your mind on it. You're really not in favor. I'm in favor, but I'm just not in favor of having a supervisor on the crew. Supervisor up here, and then we've got supervisors in every department. And that's what I can see down the road. That's what's gonna end up happening.
That was only my point. I'm just concerned.
And I'm I'm not saying I'm against it. I I'm.
Well, no, but I I just need to know where the board wants to go with this.
I like the idea of having one guy in charge.
One individual.
Yeah. The one person in charge. I like that idea. And do I think Kelly's got too much on her plate? Absolutely. We've dumped all the departments on her and never asked her a bit. You know, I mean, we just said, yeah, you're taking it over. And she does need the help.
Well, the other way to go, the other way to go. No, go ahead, finish. I didn't mean to interrupt.
I think we gotta be careful that we don't end up like Paul said, that we have supervisors and that's all I'm saying, a supervisor up top. I think that somehow we've gotta work everything out, and I think it's gonna take more than match. And I do think it should go in front of the people.
So Phil, does that answer your question? I kind of got.
Yeah, I think so. I I mean, I'm I'm getting the impression that you think it's an idea that who's time to come as well. Am I correct?
Yeah, and and I just caution the board on going too quickly. Just do it in phases. Each year, do a new phase or something.
Now, am I, uh?
That I I agree with. I think Paul's had her hand up for a long time.
Am I unfair?
One quick question. What is the problem of putting this on a warrant article? What's your feeling on it?
One I don't, one I don't feel it needs to be. Because you're not creating a new position.
Oh, sure. I had a feeling it was creating a new position. Maybe I'm wrong on that. I feel.
The way I look at it is we're giving the title of road agent a different title. That's it. That's the way I look at it, because the money's not exceeding or going under.
And that's gonna have to be explained.
Two, you already, we are, town already had in place a highway foreman for years. Mr. Roberts down the road kinda phased that out, the greater operator of payload op, the front end load operator, we kinda came to foreman on different crews. So when we went to foreman years ago, we never brought that before the people. I don't remember. I think we put it out there as foreman for the hi, like the highway agent at that point. Down the road, like the highway agent went away, Mr. Roberts took over. I don't feel this needs to go before that, before the people to vote. I think the selectmen have the right to do this. We're just changing the title of it. We're not changing the position.
It's a reorganization.
It's just a reorganization.
It's only a reorganization, and that's different.
And all I'm saying is, like, if we talked about this for three years now, and it's, this is the opportunity. Mr. Roberts is retiring after a wonderful career here and done this well, which saved the taxpayers millions of dollars. He feels that the time is right. Liz does. I think it's something that we need to look at. And if you're not ready to do it this year, if you wanna go back and think about it over the next two weeks, we can. And then come back again with some more ideas. But it's, you know, one way or another, we have to make a decision. Mr. Roberts.
If I may, I know everybody, you keep going back to this redundancy of department heads, but the thing is, you need those people to run the day to day operations.
Yeah.
Because you take, you take a public works director, he's gonna go down and direct the guys how to paint the building. That's not what he does. That's what the apartment head does. The only thing public works director says, you gotta get this building painted. What do you need? Five hundred gallons of paint? We'll send that down, send paintbrushes, call Reuben, deliver the stuff there, let's get it done. That's what he does. He oversees that problem area. Budgets are the same way. I mean, you know, the the department heads goes to him to say, wh- wh- where do we increase? Where's our lows? Where's our highs? It is a big administrative job once it gets going, because read some of the job descriptions. It's incredible what what administratively they could draw from and work with. You have a G I S program coming in. That's gonna be phenomenal, not just to you, but for someone that has a background in it. Be able to put it together to present to you where you're at. That goes back to your master plan. This guy should be sitting right in the middle of your master plan planning to be able to put this thing together. He'll have the knowledge and the background to do that. I've already been asked to be on the committee, and I just kinda bow it out. But again, all of this is going to come together. It just takes.
You need.
You need that person on the ground, the boots. Courtney's the boots on the ground. She's in the hole every time I turn around. But, you know, she's the boots on the ground. She makes sure the day to day operations are working. That's what it's all about. She runs into a problem, she calls the public works director. I need two trucks and the excavator. Be there Monday morning. You know, that's what the public works director does.
So let me ask you a question, if I may. Another question. So every selectman meeting, do we not see the department heads just, the public works director will speak for everyone on every meeting?
Should. And if there's any problems, then that's the person that's gonna, Liz is gonna call the public works director in and say, hey, we got a problem with this. This is what came up. What can we do about it? She'll, between the two of them, they'll they'll resolve the problem, and if they can't, then they're gonna sit here before the board's selectmen and resolve. Do you have a selectman to go directly to the department head? No, that's what the public works director does. He makes sure, no matter what he has to draw, that he does that.
See what they think?
Mr. McGolden wants to know if you wanna hear from the other department.
I would.
Is there a feeling, Mr. Roberts?
Courtney, I'll call you up.
Thank you, Kenny.
Thank you, guys.
She's chomping at the bit, so.
I just had a general question. Um, if you're looking into, phasing into this, just, uh, what requirements and licenses is the public works director going to have? Because I carry the license for the town.
And you work with the public works director in Meredith?
No.
No, you didn't. That's sad.
I, uh, emailed Kenny the job description from Meredith. It's something to think about, because, I mean, now I have to come to you guys and ask five people permission to do something. And I have to ask somebody else, who then is gonna come to you guys, and then I'm gonna be told what I can do.
My point at hand.
Only thing I am concerned about.
Well, let me ask you this. Would we keep water separate, where it's a separate entity really to the town?
I would be, discussion down the road, like you said, over a th- three year phase.
That's all I have.
No, that's a good, good perspective on it. Kelly's thinking, yeah.
Kinda way I'm going with this.
Kelly?
Kelly's chomping at the bit, too.
Kelly, I owe you an apology from a couple meetings ago, and I apologize, but say.
Right.
By the way, Kelly, that was, I didn't mean to do that. All right.
I think that the Parks and Recreation Director does have a lot of responsibility. And I think that I may not have the resources to do my job as most efficient. Um, for example, I don't have a town vehicle to go check, um, my staff. I, um, don't have so many equipment that we need. I don't have enough staff. So, but we're doing the best that we can with what we have, and I've always managed to do that. I think that it would be nice to have a public works director that could get grants. That, I agree with what Mr. Roberts said. That person would pay for their position through that grant writing. Uh, for, if it's bridges or block grants for roads, I think that's important. Um, also, some of the logistic things to think about is if the grounds and maintenance went to the highway and was housed there, what would that look like? Is there enough space? Um, are there enough vehicles for a public works director? A foreman, um, grounds and maintenance staff, seasonal staff that comes in, what kind of vehicles? Who would ride with who? And there's just more to that. Um, also, where would the storage of equipment be? Would the vehicles be parked at the highway department? Would they be parked at the Avis, um, public park building? Um, those are just some of the, um, things to think about. The town is growing. And I think that a public works director is an important step for a growing town, and I think it would provide a more efficient cohesive group, um, just as long as all the logistics were figured out. As far as what would I do if the public works director was here, um, would my position not be needed? I I don't think so. I think that I do a lot of supervision of staff as far as we have, um, like, I almost have a full time job scheduling the cleaning of the buildings right now, where I have, um, daily emails saying, we're having a meeting this night, can you schedule this? Uh, I have staff issues. People are out sick, people are on vacation, people have family emergencies. Who handles these things? Would a public works director have that ability to just drop what they're doing and handle staff issues, handle personnel problems? Um, people are leaving. We have turn, if there's turnover, hiring new people. Who hires those people? Who reviews those applications? Would a public works director have time to do all of this work? Uh, we have issues at the cemetery. Um, if people are, uh, trying to buy a a lot, we have two burials this week. We have grounds and maintenance staff digging graves this week for two people. Um, just moving those people around. Now, we have to also clean buildings. Um, so that's just a lot to shelve. And if a public works director was building roads and had solid weight, solid weight concerns, would they be able to dedicate a hundred percent to their doing? I just think the department has her needed to do those day to day operations of and mostly deal with personnel issues. So that's my concern. Thank you for asking.
Welcome.
Thank you.
They keep talking about grants, but I don't see nothing in here that says write grants.
We have one department head left in here. The chief, would you like to hear from the chief, too?
I was interested in hearing the discussion, but it's a little out of.
Hey.
The police chief, so.
Well, well, wait, well, wait a minute. It's just like. It, this is just a draft. I asked you all to go and look at different public works directors, positions throughout different towns. I had this one for the last, since I've been talking about this. That's how long I've held on to this. And so I got it. I was going through my papers the other day from good over, good over a year ago. I came across this. It was a couple weeks ago. Took a picture of it, sent it to Liz. She can, you give me the original copy. This is just the draft. I'm not saying to follow that a hundred percent. You can add more into it. You can take some out of it. Okay, I'd like to help out, so that would be scratched because we have our own.
Yeah, right. I understand that.
So this is a draft here. It's whether you decide how you want to pick this apart or add to it. That's all it was. So I didn't know if any other gentleman went and got any job description from any other towns on the public works director.
I will. I will. I can get, I can get a lot.
Well, I know, Mr. Roberts has some too, but I'm just asking if the other, the other Ford summon had brought in anything to about public works.
It was similar, similar to this. The reason I'm asking is because usually you hire a grant writer. And we keep getting told that the public works director will write grants.
Would write grants. It's why not you put that in the job description, just like we asked for engineering to, like Mr. Roberts said. He's done very well with the road reconstruction where they're laid out. He contacts different peoples, helped them relay out the road. I think one was up on Roberts' cover this year. They found out they had a water line going across there, figure out how they're gonna fix that with the drainage issue. Some of the roads need to be engineered. This might help save some money in engineering, because you have someone, if you want it, in the job description, engineering degrees. Mr. Roberts done well, because I think he's gone how many years to road scholars, to U N H. I can't remember that program, how many years you went to that, which helped him out quite a bit. Are the roads up to what we would do as engineering standards? I think he'll say, they're pretty close there, but not quite. Because we don't have them engineered anymore. That's where we're saving a lot of the money and plus not hiring out private. Have they done an exceptional job for what they have to work with? Yes. And they, he saved us mil- millions of dollars over the years since good town highway crews taken it over. But it's like he said, it's time to change. It's time to move on to the future. Um, all I'm saying, it's time. We talked about it for the last three years. We keep, as you say, kick the can down. So the time has come. You either kick the can down or stop it. We either do some move forward with it, or we just put it to rest, and we keep as a highway agent aspect and keep all the apartments as is. I'm just bringing it forward as I said I would. Just like as we have to do the health insurance next week, bringing that forward. We talked about it, we talked about it, now it's here. We don't have to do anything this year, but if we don't do anything this year, start, starting, starting January first, we will be sitting down with department heads to talk about it, because it's something that has to be seriously discussed. We were supposed to do that last year. We didn't get to it. Pandemic hit. Everyone uses the pandemic. I'm not gonna use the pandemic. We just didn't get to it. Okay? And it wasn't because of the pandemic. We just did not get to it. So now's the time for this. We're getting to it. It's whether the pleasure of the board is to formulate a reorganization of the different departments. Take responsibilities away from some departments so they can get back to doing what they were hired to do. Okay, and then have the knowledge, have the resources to pull from different departments to get things done. And doing it, and phasing it in. Whoever gets hired for this position, they understand this is the way it will look like in three years. We're phasing in in three years. So they're not gonna get more money just because we phased in two more departments. They already know this going into the job description. This will give them time to get built up. That's the way I look at it. Um, but I just figured this is the time. We either put it to bed, or we move forward, I think. So one way or the other. And all I'm looking at is reorganization, and you're reorganizing the job description of the highway agent. That's all you're doing.
Because the citizens of town are gonna ask if that's gonna be at a, at a cost. And that's gonna be a concern from all.
There is no added cost.
There's no added cost.
The only.
I mean, some of them.
I'll take that back. No, I mean, interrupt you. There will be an added cost, because if you make someone at the highway department an acting foreman, that's gonna pull somebody out of one of those equipments. So somebody will have to get hired on again. Unless the acting foreman, is it the public works director takes the pickup truck that Mr. Roberts drives now? The acting foreman will still run the loader or run one of the pickup trucks. Already, we already had planned on hiring a new truck driver this year. So this possibly could be another laborer, truck driver down the road. Another apartment head? Another apartment head, no. But if you take on three more roads, you're gonna end up having another truck driver. Or like, or you might say, we need a laborer for the grounds, the buildings. That's what my, that's what the public works director should tell us. Or that's not the case, the way the board wants to go. The way I look at it is, you think we need more Indians than we do chiefs? Then we'll start, stay with highway agent and add more Indians. If you wanna put it that way. I don't like to call that help Indians, but.
No, but that's all I'm afraid of, just like.
You're saying you're getting administrative heavy, you're getting chief heavy.
Yes.
Of course.
I didn't use it in that term, but it's all.
I should not use it in that term either. But I'm just looking, myself, I was looking at reorganization is what I'm looking at.
I agree with that, since you're worried that way. If it's a phase, you do it. It's time we do it.
For what it's worth, since I was the beginning of the conversation, and I said, literally, I don't know, so I wanna hear from everybody.
Gee, you did.
How do you like us now?
No, no, but I mean, I'm I'm glad that we had a couple department heads to put their two cents into, and I didn't mean to put them on the spot, but I don't think I did. I really don't think I put Liz on the spot. If we had to vote tonight, and I don't, I kinda like the idea of waiting a couple weeks and finalizing our job description, okay, with the material we've got and what fits this town as opposed to another town. But if we had to vote tonight, if I thought the position was created and it replaces the road agent, and the foreman at the, you know, in the road department stays foreman, at least that's the way it is right now. So initially, we are not adding costs. If 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 I had to vote now after hearing what everybody has to say, I would vote yes. But I am in favor of taking a couple of weeks to reconstruct or make a job description that literally fits our town. I I don't know whether it's necessary to have a warrant article.
No, not what, I don't think it is what we're. Can we, uh, Liz, draw us up one that fits us?
I think Mr. Roberts and her could sit down together and work on that.
Draw one up that fits us, and then we can vote then?
The only thing is.
I I do like the idea that we just reorganize.
We shouldn't wait till any more than the first of December to get it advertised, if we're gonna go that way.
I think it's gotta go up quick.
Mr. Rochelle, going back to what I'm saying, I think you understand where I'm going and what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Um, reorganization, this is, sounds a lot better to me than going forward with a. Um, reorganization, this is, sounds a lot better to me than going forward with a quote-unquote a public works director. And that's gonna, and, and doing it in phases, I'm all for that. I am concerned with the town, and, and it's taxpayers, uh, of knowing that this isn't gonna be an increase in their, in, in putting on another position that's gonna cost the taxpayers more money. They need to know that it's more or less a reorganization of our departments, and helping each department, and this person is taking that position to help each and every one. If that's the case, and that's how we do it, I'm for it, I could vote on it right now. And that's what changed my mind is, when he said we're gonna reorganize it, we're not creating, we're reorganizing that. Clicked.
And down the road, if we have to hire another truck driver, it's because it can on more roads. And that makes sense down the road. But initially, I think we can be honest with the taxpayers, saying we're reorganizing. You know, we're, we're, there won't be the head of the Highway Department anymore, there'll be Director of Public Works that phases in, will include the other things. And the foreman down at the Highway Department will remain the foreman.
But, he's gonna start as, as a, a highway agent. Yes.
Yeah.
And he's gonna be on over three years. Right, so that's-
The first year should be the easiest.
Yes.
We can be to hire a public works director to start in April or a little earlier, and that's the only change. And then, and then in 2021, you work on what the, what the chain, what the further reorganization is following you. And so on and so forth, each year you do it slowly in phases.
Yeah, 'cause it's gonna take them a long time to really, to really know all the roads.
Yeah, so you, so you don't have to create a lot of positions, you don't have to create a lot, the first year should be one position.
That's why I was saying it's too much. Too, too much, too little time to expect someone to come in and just do this position in that fashion. Not necessarily all fifteen of these, but in that manner.
The first year, the way, the way I see it myself, would be that the public works director is hired. Takes that first year, scopes out everything that the town has, and also decides who should be a foreman for the Highway Department. See if they, they have somebody within their department that they feel comfortable with staying, that would be the foreman. Now, the foreman could still be a loader operator, could be the greater operator, could be a truck driver. Because on any crew, the foreman usually gets in and swings the hammer just as well as the next guy does. Or excavation, whatever. The first year could be done that, working with the town administrator. And the other department is how to formulate a plan to phase in other departments coming underneath that hospice as a reorganization. And I think that, that should be one of the very first steps. That's the way I look at it, and I guess that's all I have to say, I can't really say much more to how I feel about the position.
I'm looking at it too as the current board, as it is, that's like creating this situation. Four of you guys are gonna be here for a good solid more year, over a year, right? We don't know about me yet, and I don't wanna comment on that right now. But if this board agrees, four people at least are still gonna be here to see this thing through. You know, and it's four of the five people who created the situation. So I think this board would be able to handle the transition a bit better. Whether I'm there or not, that's to be seen.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Come on, I, I think we're basically all in agreement on the total program. We've had, uh, three town employees here, department head. Two anyways, that agree with it too.
I think we can move forward, have Liz write up the thing.
Get a-
One of us over.
So the only thing you'll have- The candidacy for that, there will be an increase in that pay because of assuming responsibility of leading a crew.
Yeah, you can't ask somebody to move up not, so.
That's, that's all I'm saying, so is there an added cost? There will be an added cost.
Minimal, that's what I was concerned about.
I, I would suggest from the consensus of the board, if you wanna do that, to have the town administrator, highway agent get together, formulate a job description. The, the takeover of his position. Mr. Roberts.
Okay, just to, you know, it's great for town administrator and I to be together, I just handed her summer bills and, uh, Meredith's job description is exactly what all their duties and everything are. As long as the board's in agreement, we'll go back to the same thing, I stepped outside the box and just grabbed things and got things done. Under his job description and everything, that he has the ability to do that. Kelly calls up and says, "I need two people to help me do this," Courtney calls and says, "I need..." That he has the ability instead of coming here and sitting here and saying, "Do we have permission to do this?" We could've done it. Just someplace in that job description to be able to add that, that he has the ability to, to draw from sources to get the job done.
I feel the only way it should come before us is if there's a money constraint. Yes. And then the job, on the pull from the resources that are available to the individual, they should just be able to go and get it done.
I mean, it already happens now.
I think kinda- My job description's right there, talking about monies, if there's any monies involved in a company, we're concerned.
It happens now.
So the consensus of the board, gentlemen?
I can, I'm sorry, I can move forward with it?
Definitely.
Yes.
Yes, big all, yes. So gentlemen, that, that being said, and the health insurance being put off till next week, is there anything else from you, the town administrator? It's gonna be next Monday, Mr. Chairman, for the business.
Yes, I do have something for other business, I, it'll take less than sixty seconds.
Are we, are we voting on this, or no?
I just asked for a consensus.
Oh, just a consensus.
We're all in agreement, that we, it's hard to vote on a description or pay or anything else, I'm not having it formulated, so I'm asked for a consensus that we're moving forward.
Right. Thank you. Sorry.
That's alright. So, this is my annual evaluation. You can take home and read, and then at the next meeting next week, if you have questions, we can talk about it. That's it.
Anything else, ma'am?
No.
If not, gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at seven seventeen.
Oh, move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Mr. Holt to adjourn at seven seventeen, do I have a second?
Second.
Second member of McDonald, any discussion? I'll poll the board, Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Just Whitman.
Yes.
Porchelle.
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
My word, yes, both in affirmative. Thank you folks for attending night, thank you for your input from the department. Next Monday night, we will be discussing the health insurance, along with the regular agenda items.
And, yeah, conservation.